I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Any public comments for items not on the agenda for discussion, not action?
I'm not sure if it's on the agenda or not. I'm here for the planning board. I just wanted to check in with you on a communication I got from somebody in the select board about an application that you're considering filing for an Island Fellow position. And the element that involved the question for me was the comprehensive plan and whether it made sense for the planning board to have somebody to help with the comprehensive plan and whether it needs updating. And I've been meant to come in this week and I just haven't had the chance. So I just wanted to make sure that to the extent you need to get moving on that or need either participate or do anything on that, let me know.
Okay. But you're in favor of it?
Yeah, it seems like a good thing. And the question has also been, is there anything else? And the answer is yes, there's a ton of things that we could use help with. And so anything that can be done to help and certainly comprehensive plan, but other things too, I'm happy to work with you if you have to comment.
Okay. I think Eliza is writing that application. Is that correct?
Eliza and I are working on it. We're meeting with an Island Institute on Friday to talk about it. The comprehensive plan is really going to be the primary focus with several other things. But the plan is to have a planning board involvement.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
Awesome. Thanks, Aaron. All right, other public comments? All right, moving on. Town reports. Vika? Oh, I want to say one thing before we get into the meeting. And I've already shared this with Eliza, who's participating online tonight. Selfishly, I would love to end the meeting as quickly as we can tonight. It's the holidays. I'm also trying to catch the eight o'clock vote. If I can't, I can't. One more.
You put a point.
Yep.
The sub-chaordom.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, so moving on. Town reports. Vika?
Before we get to town reports, I guess for the public that might be listening, we do have a select board member who is not presently here, participating remotely with the remote participation policy. If a select board member is absent, they're able to participate remotely. That also opens up the opportunity for anybody else that's remote, which is nobody at the moment, to be able to participate. So on to town reports. So there's just the town administrators' report, and there's a couple of things on here, and there is a couple of other things too that I've added since then. So committee members, we have had a few boards build in the last couple of weeks, which is great. We do need two Board of Adjustment and Appeals members. We've needed them before. Right now, we need them even more so because there is an application in front of the town. And based on the application, the two out of the three current board members that are on the committee would need to recuse themselves not being able to have a quorum. Knowing this, we cannot advertise it, and we don't have a committee to see that application. So we really need two board members and Board of Adjustment and Appeals, not only to fill the board, but to be able to hear the application that we have in front of us. There is a board member also needed on the planning board. Carol?
So I think at the last meeting, we had thought, I had some strange frank reflection that there was an alternative if the committee was not functioning or, you know, didn't have enough.
I checked with the town attorney, and the town attorney said, as things stand, you need two people to be appointed to the committee. In getting appointed, they need to be in the mindset of signing up for a three-year term. If they don't want to do three years, they could always resign early or quit early, but that's really the option that we have to go forward.
But there is no alternative if there's, because I think we had discussed a while back, when the Board of Appeals was very active, that if it was, you know, if the board resigned en masse, there was an alternative or my mistake. Like, I thought it could then be promoted to the select board. Is that not correct?
So the town attorney did not specify that, but I can clarify to see if it's something that could be brought onto this select board.
I think that came from Natalie.
Okay. I'll double-check with Ben.
When the whole very tense, you know, time of Board of Appeals was a concern, that you might have no board.
Yep, yep. I can double-check with him about whether a select board can hear it or not. Eliza, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Vika, did I remember you saying that you were going to check with the attorney to see if members of the select board could stand in in a situation like this?
Members of the select board cannot sit in on the Board of Adjustment Appeals. That I know. What Carol is suggesting, if it's, is asking is the clarification if we could be brought to the select board to, for the application to be heard, which is different from members of the select board sitting in on the appeals board.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Select board, family members of select board members can't serve. We accept that.
Okay. So I will double-check with, I'll shoot them an email tomorrow just to double-check that out. All right, moving on to barging. The planks were moved on December 10th with no issues. The town noticed DEP about the process. The DEP did receive photos from me of after the fact. And then the code enforcement officer also wrote an email to DEP and myself just because a permit was issued. He was kind of doing a full circle and closing out that permit and explaining what is able to go forward, moving forward. So on January 7th, there will be a public presentation by GEI relative to the findings that they gathered about barging there and other locations. The report is on the town website. The butters were notified by Richard from the last meeting when the board agreed to do that. And so at this point, barging is continuing. I did reach out to Lionel today just to see how things were going, and they said that, you know, they're not as great as they were when the planks were in. They are beginning to experience some issues with the larger vehicles where there are some sinking happening. And so they're going to continue doing the best that they can. But there is the concern that as this continues, it will become in a similar situation where they're lingering there longer as a result of the process taking longer and being more, you know, creating more noise for the neighbors and so forth, things that they've been able to avoid these last couple of months. And we have not heard any follow-up from DEP, but right now, based on what the code enforcement officer sent to DEP and what we've been told in the past is Public Works will be able to have the capacity to go down there and move seaweed if there are seaweed in the way, not add any new material, but kind of maintain the area and be able to have it be open and accessible for the large vehicles. So.
Carol, what do you do?
Yeah, I'm just, when you say large vehicles, I'm just wondering, you know, I think one, essential service is to be able to get the trash trucks off of there. So I'm just wondering, do we need to prioritize or, I mean, do we need to restrict access at all so that we can be sure to get trash off of there? I mean, what are your thoughts about that?
I think it's a conversation that's definitely going to have to happen. I think that my recommendation would be is to, at this point, wait to see how the discussion goes on January 7th and what the outcome of that is. And then the following meeting, the board maybe have that as an agenda item and proceed with maybe whatever the decisions the board wants to make and see what the public input has been and maybe see whether we have more feedback from the barging, kind of figure out how the process is going. But I think that's probably, in the near future, is trying to figure out how that could be maintained and how you can control the use of the space a bit.
Yeah, because I think it's, you know, the select board may really have to consider what the priority uses are, and at least when we don't have, you know, the ramp, you might have priority choices.
David?
I just wanted to confirm at 6:00 PM, the meeting with?
Tuesday, January 7th, 6:00 PM. Here. So the town is waiting on a proposal from GEI for the stonework for the 30% to sign. And it's a question that was brought up by Bob about scheduling a meeting to discuss an active need.
So they think the soonest they'll get their proposal to us is January 2nd. And then I leave on January 5th. The board is obviously free to have a conversation without me. I've been fairly involved in it. My thought was if the board so desired, we could tentatively schedule a meeting for January 3rd as an open meeting and discuss the proposal and take any necessary action. Or we can just look at the proposal and add it to the agenda of the next regular board meeting, at which I would not be present. Carol?
So what I, I talked to Vika earlier today. What would make sense to me is to get the proposal on the 7th or the 3rd or whatever, but then GEI is going to, the same individuals are going to be on site here at the town on the 7th. And so I personally, I know you may not be available, but, I mean, I'd like to have an in-person meeting with them to ask our questions about, because I think this is a pretty big adventure that we're about to start on. So I think we really have to kind of focus on it. So I would suggest we, you know, can look at the proposal and maybe discuss our questions on the 3rd, but not take any action, and then follow up with specific questions that we might have and perhaps give them to GEI ahead of time so they're prepared. But then have, I don't know, you know, it could be an open session workshop prior to the, prior to the.
6:00.
Barge meeting, just to take advantage of the fact that they'll be here. Because we, some people have not met them in person, I don't think so.
I think that's a great idea. So Carol, are you saying you would suggest that we schedule a January 3rd brief meeting of the board for the purpose of discussing the proposal in advance of their attendance on the 7th, and then having the board meet with them on the 7th as well about that?
I guess I defer to Vika for advice there. I think definitely we want to know what your thoughts are on the proposal before you leave, whether that's at a select board meeting or you want to transmit that to us some other way. But that's up to you. I believe that to you, Vika, to decide, because I don't know what else is on the agenda for that meeting.
So the second is Wednesday. The first is a Wednesday. So the select board had agreed to have a select board meeting on Thursday, the second.
Okay, gotcha.
So the third is a Friday, and it would be a remote meeting with the select board, isn't it? No? On person?
It could be either way. Doesn't matter.
Oh, so you're talking about a select board meeting on the 2nd, and then a second meeting of just the select board to discuss the proposal? Is that what you mean?
It would be an open meeting. My proposal would be an open meeting. But the only agenda item on the 3rd would be to discuss the proposal that we received on the 2nd, which obviously we would not be able to discuss on the 2nd.
So the 3rd is a Friday?
Yes.
That's not an optimal night for a meeting?
Right.
For me?
Agreed. And to your point, I could just look it over and send my comments to everybody via email. No replies, obviously, but.
And I think we could wait to, I don't know when you're back, but we would wait. Are you back for that next meeting?
No. Back on the 18th.
So the next, second meeting in the month is?
Be 15th.
Well, I think that, to me, is, I don't know. That's how I, I think if you want to provide your comments, I think we can do our best as a board to kind of have a conversation with them, and if it's a little bit back to the drawing board, then who knows when that will be anyway.
Yes. Okay.
That's what I would recommend. I don't know how this is reported.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Well, I agree that the Friday meeting is probably not optimal.
Yeah.
I think we should be giving it more attention than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could actually do a remote meeting on Saturday if we wanted to. I was less eager to propose that because it's Saturday, but if people wanted to. I'll be in Miami on Saturday, but on Sunday, I go into Cuba. It won't be accessible.
Well, I think we have a lot of, don't we have several weekend meetings coming?
Oh, yeah, we do.
So I think we'll just do our best as.
I'd perfectly fine with that.
If you're okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay. So the next thing is just more or less to remind the board that you have received the first draft of the budget on January 8th. I started compiling information and numbers for that. So that will be coming, coming your way. And then I think we're pretty much meeting regularly every week for a while until we can get through a lot of the budget. So any questions about that?
I guess in.
Carol?
In relation to that, what's the story with the finance committee? Are they have, do they have an initial meeting scheduled at all?
So the finance committee, I, it took a lot of back and forth trying to figure out when we can get together. We have not an official meeting, but I'm having a converse, a remote conversation with the members that are going to be part of the finance committee, just to have a general discussion of how to proceed and what the meeting dates would be like. And then we will set up an official first meeting and we'll have it advertised and things like that. So, but getting them all together initially has been a process, but we finally got a date. So, but yeah, so we have, we have them, and I think they're all eager to start, so.
And Richard?
So you said every week, so starting on the 8th, every Wednesday at 6 o'clock? Is that what we?
For meetings?
For the, for the budget. Well.
So look at the town website. The board had adopted a budget schedule, and so the town website has all the regular board meetings and the budget schedule that you as a board adopted on there. So between the town regular meetings and the budget meetings, it's pretty much every week, yes. Some Tuesday meetings, some Saturday meetings.
When I went to post them on my personal calendar, I did a double take, pretty much every week plus a few Saturdays, quite a few Saturdays.
Okay, I could use a reminder, some updated, because I don't.
Well, if you look at the town website.
Go to the town website calendar.
The town calendar. They're all on there, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know an easy way to upload that to a Google Calendar, but.
I know, I can't, it's my town and personal. I don't have.
Okay. Look at the calendar.
It's got to be.
I'm all in Outlook now, so that's how I got.
So moving on.
So, do you have a question?
One question, I hate to ask it, but what's the status of the slow removal?
I knew someone was going to ask. I finally was able to connect with them today, the gentleman that the Coastal Waters had recommended. And he is able to come out tomorrow at 11:00 AM to do the walkthrough and come up with the plan and whatnot. And tomorrow, I am headed to Boston to see a surgeon, so I reached out to Coastal Waters. And Jeff Westcott will be able to attend, just to pass on any information to Public Works. I have not heard from Coastal Waters people that I've emailed, but I'm hoping one or two of them could be there tomorrow.
Or you didn't even know them at the time.
Yes, but I don't think they were listening.
Probably weren't.
The joys of no longer being on the board.
Carol?
And it sounds like we're heading down that track. It's fine. I just also wanted to be sure you are aware, because we've been getting, I've been getting emails from DOT. I haven't long to see if the rest of you are, but, so all the work going on in Castle Bay by DOT, the firm they hired is Bancroft. And so they will be working all over the bay, just saying. And then I believe, if you look at that schedule, it looks like the January 4th won't be until 2025. Good. So did you guys all get that? I wonder why I'm getting it. And did you get it, Vika? Okay, I'll forward it to everybody.
Thank you.
The company that the Coastal Waters recommended to move forward was not Bancroft, for Bancroft, for the removal.
I know. Just for your, for your information, Bancroft is a contractor for all of the Castle Bay state facilities.
The state moved with a high price solution, surprise price.
And then, so the two other things that I had added to the TA is, one is Chibid was awarded $50,000 housing opportunity municipal grant. Thanks to Carol for being on it. It ended up going to my junk box, so I never saw the initial email, and now I'm being more vigilant about my junk email. I did reach out to them, and the state has finalized the contract, and the awarded municipalities should be hearing in the next couple of weeks, so probably after the holidays. And so the primary incentive of this was based on the application was to seek assistance in planning, and you can elaborate more on it, and facilitating towards housing.
Well, and I think we have.
Initiatives.
To sort of answer Aaron, we have some money in there for the Complan. So there are a couple of different grants that I think we've cobbled together to get some support to do our revised Complan. And then part of that is something called the Housing Roadmap, which I think Eliza Jane, I know she can hear me, but she'll be interested in. But I also think we need to, so that grant we applied for almost a year ago and never heard anything for the longest time, and they awarded them this late this fall. So I think we should revisit the grant. And now they're going on to the second round. And so, anyway, I think, you know, I can get together with Aaron and you and sort of, we should decide. But it's a lot of money. I think we can kind of use it to the best of our needs. So some of that can be Complan and ordinance updates that also encourage housing, and some of it is to help, you know, figure out what to do about us, so.
Is the second round also planning oriented?
Yeah, they're all, they're all planning.
Okay, okay.
It's out of housing, it's out of economic development.
Mm-hmm. Good.
I think what we're experiencing is a lot of entities are dumping money right now, trying to get rid of money or get it allocated before things change.
Yeah.
And then the last thing that I had on the TA report was, we did have a visit today, actually, if we're scheduled to today, from risk management and workers come from MMA. The last time they were out here was in 2019, so they just wanted to come out and do an assessment of all of our infrastructure and our buildings. And we will be getting a report within the next week or two of where we could improve to make sure that we're a little bit safer and more in line with how things should be done, so then if we get an unexpected visit from the state that we're, you know, operating under. So they did say overall, things looked good. Public Works and transfer station were the two areas where they felt the most improvement were needed. But there was very visible change happening in the right direction based on their, you know, their perspective. So they felt pretty comfortable. So we'll get that report. That will actually be very helpful in us determining what checklists we really need to go through with the new crew and the new, you know, new employees at the transfer station, new employees at Solid Waste. And then that could help us going into the budget season. If there are improvements that we need that they're recommending, that we need to set a little money aside here and there, then that's something that we'd be able to use as a guide going into the budget process. But it's not anything, you know, extreme for the most part, so.
Any questions?
And that's what I had on the TA report.
Any comments or questions from the public on the TA report? All right, seeing none. Moving along. To appoint a select board member to the ad hoc Solid Waste Committee. And I know Eliza can hear us, it's a little bit harder for us to hear her, but Vika, didn't Eliza speak to you as well?
Yeah, Eliza showed interest in being a part of their, of this committee. So we do now have three members of the public that are interested to serve, and she was interested to be a part of it as the appointed select board member.
Anybody else chomping at the bit?
Oh, hi, it's Eliza, if you can hear me. Oh, yes, I'd love to be on the committee. And would that be as a voting or a non-voting member? Yep, that's fine. And do we, I know there's a survey, are we talking about that now or in other business?
No, we're gonna, that, this is just for, to appoint the committee member, so not really to go for transfer station things in general.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So we don't need a motion for that, more of a sentence of the board thing?
I do need a motion for that.
Do we have a motion? Carol?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Eliza Jane at, to the ad hoc Solid Waste Committee.
Second by David. And the vote needs to be a roll call vote. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public before we vote? All right, Carol? Carol's a yes, David?
Yes.
David's a yes. Richard?
Yes.
Richard's a yes. Bob is a yes. Eliza shouldn't vote. So there we have it. All right. Moving along to appoint a select board member to the finance committee. Any discussions or volunteers or nominations?
I would do it if I can, probably. I don't know how often I're going to be, but if somebody's dying to do it, well, it has more. Richard?
Oh, finance is a foreign topic. You're going to be learning about this on January 8th.
Bob, I don't know. Can you get that?
Okay.
I'll do the best of my ability.
Give me the motion.
David?
Move to appoint Carol White to the finance committee.
Second? Second by Richard. Any conversation, discussion? Do I ask a public comment on a vote like this before we vote or after?
I think all public comments are before we vote.
Yeah. Any public comment on that nomination, excluding her, who may not comment?
I'd like to comment.
I'd send my spouse my question.
Yeah.
So a roll call vote. Carol should not vote, right? So David?
Yes.
David's a yes. Richard?
Yes.
Richard's a yes. Bob is a yes. Eliza? Eliza?
Eliza, we need a vote from you.
Yes, thank you.
And Bob, is this a roll call vote because Eliza's a vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we reread the communications policy.
All right. Thank you, Carol, very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 24-114, to discuss the proposed Chibid Island Housing Task Force and take any necessary action. There was a draft proposal in the packet. Anybody had a chance to read that? I hope. And any comments from the board regarding how that was written up in the packet?
I'd like to point out a few things.
Okay.
All right. So the task force, the proposal is, this first phase would be to form a task force with community members and nonprofits, to put the group together, then to come up with, looking at plans for housing that are good models. looking at plans for housing that are good models up and down the coast, and then to come back to the select board with a proposed plan. So, the task force would be an ad hoc, starting out looking at models and making proposals for a way to proceed, looking at lots of best practices. And after that, we would move to have a, possibly another format in whatever shape, form works well for the town.
Okay. Did everybody hear that?
I did.
Yeah, I think in the future, if we are going through this process, we ought to have a speaker attached to that computer.
Turn it down a little.
That would help too.
Yeah, wait, no.
Carol?
So, I didn't quite hear everything. I remember what our discussion was, I think, at the last meeting. So, I guess one of my questions is, are we able to read that? Is, I don't quite understand, is this to develop a structure for a housing, a municipal housing committee or entity, or is it to, you know, develop a program? I guess I just don't quite understand what the goal is.
Hi, Carol. I will tell you, I, the volume that I'm getting on this computer is very low, so I think I'm able to hear what you're saying. The plan is to look, get input from all sorts of sources within the state of Maine. We've talked to someone at Genesis, talked to Maine State Housing, talked to resources at the Island Institute, take a look at what models would work. Would we be looking at, I know the community is most interested, according to the survey of several years ago, to look at homeownership, primarily looking at supporting year-round residents. So, really, it's taking a look at what is the model that would best serve the island for the needs of the island, and also taking into account what the goals are with the comprehensive plan, and then be able to come back and say, this is what it is. So, under this committee, this task force would be the select board, which I would hope to be a member from the select board on the committee, CECA, there's someone from ECHO. I think we should have a seasonal resident and a year-round resident on the board. So, there's a lot of good input into the board, this committee, and then see what we come up with.
Yeah, and I guess I, I'm trying to get some clarity when you say what we come up with, is that for a housing model for the town to pursue as a project? Or is it an organizational structure for a group of people to, you know, support a housing project? I guess that's really, does that make sense, the question I have?
Absolutely. And I don't, I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared to give an answer to that. One of the things is, if we were to looking, look at developing, let's just say, a neighborhood with mixed incomes and opportunities, what are the best ways to make that work? Should it be on, what type of land should it be on? So, I think we need to have a broader, approach it with a broader vision. And should this be a part of the town as a committee? Should it be with an employee of the town? Should it be under the auspices of a nonprofit on the island? So, I think we need to take a look at what's working up and down the coast of Maine and what would be a good match for our island community.
I guess I still feel unclear.
Right. That's why we have a task force, because the task.
I mean, I'm not clear about the, the charge of the task force. It feels a little, I mean, I'm, I'm just, to be clear, I'm not, I think this is a good idea. I just think that we need to have a little bit more detail about what the task force's initial goals are and what the outcome of the one-year task force is. Is it to identify a structural model for, you know, moving forward with a housing project? In other words, is it a municipal entity or something else? Or, which is what I heard you say in the second half? Or is it, you know, the type of project the town, or, you know, the community is interested in?
Okay. I think I can answer that. We, when we look up and down the coast at what models are working well in towns, some of them are nonprofits that are running it, some of them are kind of quasi-municipal. So, taking a look, some of them are in private land or donated land or town land. So, really, taking a look at what are the resources we have here on the island? Where is, what is it we want to have for an, what do we want to be able to develop here on the island? Are we looking at single lots? Are we looking at cluster housing? Are we looking, you know, we, we have two good options with our rentals that CECA has done. So, I think that covers some rentals right now, but taking a look at what else we need. So, Carol, I appreciate your question, but I feel like the charge of the ad hoc task force would be to look at answering those questions with input from the community.
So, I guess another way to tackle it is, what is the outcome of the first year? What will the task force be delivering to the town or the select board?
I see. To be able to come back and say, this is the proposed, these are proposed approaches for developing housing for year-round residence on Chabig.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, you're, you're looking at sort of a feasibility study to try to figure out what, you know, housing strategies are a best fit for Chabig based on what other communities are doing? Does that sound right?
Correct.
Okay. I, I think that would be good to explicitly have that in this charge and what the actual, you know, outcome of the first year. For example, the finance committee that met last year, their ultimate goal was to come up with what a permanent finance committee might look like. And so, you know, do we need a finance committee? What would it do? You know, how, you know, how would they operate? You know, how many people? All that jazz. And so, I think for the housing, for this ad hoc housing group, I think it would be helpful to be clear about, it looks like you have a plan to have it operate for a year, and that will, you know, we'll decide whether we're gonna continue. But what is the deliverable kind of at the end of the first year? It sounds like it's a, you know, the housing committee will weigh in on what the preferred model of, you know, some kind of housing project would be for Chabig based on your review of other communities. Does that sound right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, other comments, questions? Would it make sense to come back to the next meeting with a updated draft of this document stating those goals at the end? Is that what the board's looking for here?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I couldn't approve this in this form, but before we, I mean, I'll add a couple more comments that, Eliza, you just listed off kind of who those members should represent, but it's not in this form. So, I think that should be added. And then, I'm fine with the number of seven members. I just think that's pretty ambitious, given our difficulties calculating other committees, but I just want to add that. But the other thing, just in terms of operational, we've got the process guy in the room, but if the committee is seven people, it says a quorum will be three members, which is not even a majority of the group, and a passing vote consists of a majority.
Of the quorum.
So, that seems a little out of line. It seems like they should vote maybe be four. But I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not a process person, but maybe Herb has some ideas about that.
Well, I did, a couple of things, Carol. Item three under Members' Terms does list those groups, those pools of representatives Eliza referred to verbally.
Where is that?
Item three on the second page.
But that doesn't come out to seven.
Members will be, members will be a pool of applicants by the select board. Members will represent the town of Chabig, one member of CECA, one member of ECHO, one year-round resident, and one seasonal resident. And you're right, that doesn't come out to seven. So, I think it's a, maybe that should say a minimum of one of each of those, something like that.
Okay, well, that's, I wasn't sure. I mean, I would personally recommend five members in the groups that are identified makes sense to me. And get more, great, but a minimum of five. I think, I don't know, you, you know better, you've been trying to populate this.
The other point relative to quorum versus majority, I did look in Robert's Rules, and a quorum, much to my surprise, does not need to be a majority, it can be any number you pick. That does speak at length about the danger of having too small of a number if you're dealing with money, things like that. But it's a little confusing the way, to me, it was a little confusing.
Well, and I guess I wouldn't want a committee of seven that a quorum is only three. It does not.
And a majority is only, a minimum majority is only two, the way this is worded.
Right. I don't, personally, I don't think that's a good way, a good practice. I would say, if you had five, then three would make sense.
So, okay, other comments? And Eliza, are you getting these ideas down for a revised draft perhaps? Or can you not hear?
I, I think I am. I like the idea of having a committee of five, but I just thought it should be important if more than five people express an interest, that that would create the opportunity for going up to seven. So, being on the hopeful side, you're absolutely right about the quorum. On the other hand, if it's a group of five versus a group of seven, that does change things. So, I'd be glad to rewrite it, but I would like to say a minimum of five people on the task force. But if there are other members of the community that want to have input, that they would be possible to go up to seven.
I think you could include that in the revised draft, would be great. Other comments?
I guess my last comment is, and I, is on the spending. I don't know, we typically don't have committees spend money. They can come to the select board and make a, you know, request for something, but I, I would take that out, frankly, because I don't think, I mean, and if this committee then moves into some kind of housing authority that has to have, you know, fiscal powers, then we could deal with it then.
All right, other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Mr. Manning?
I'll try not to repeat, and I'll try not to go on too long. Feel free to shut me down. Eliza, I want to applaud the effort to formalize this, this group and to, and to give direction. It's, it's an important thing to do. I think some of the confusion in this is that it, it seems like your ultimate goal is maybe a standing committee or a permanent structure, but your task force is a one, as Carol pointed out, a one-year task force. But it's confusing because in your membership, you give people three and four-year terms on a one-year committee. So, that's a little confusing and, and causes, in one place you call it a committee, in one place you call it a task force, I'd be sort of consistent with that. Task force have, have more flexibility and typically have a really, as Carol said, a specific set of tasks. I do, what I, the way I would think about what Carol said in terms of the, what's the deliverable at the end? You make the statement, at the end of the first year in December 2025, the CHTF and select board will decide how the committee should continue in on what terms. So, what you should ask yourself is what the piece of paper, when those two boards meet, what the piece of paper in front of everybody needs to say in order to give you enough information to decide very specifically? Like it, you know, as specific as you can possibly be, because that's what's gonna make the task force efficient, is to have a limited set of specific tasks. When you ultimately blossom out into a standing committee, which I think is your ultimate goal, maybe you can broaden the scope a little bit. But in my, in my experience, the more specific you can make a one-year charge in terms of the deliverable, when a decision is gonna be made based on it is, is important. I agree with the spending, you, you copied information, cut and pasted information from, from a policy. And if it's in the policy, you don't need it to, in another document, and the risk of make, getting those two out of sync in some way is probably not worth putting it in there. So, when the, when the board, when the task force first meets, just give them the policy on spending so they know it's a possibility and they know what the process is. But don't make it part, don't make it part of this document. If it were me, I would make this document simply a memo from the Board of Selectmen to the new group, to the task force. Not in the shape of a, of a committee ordinance or a, you know, forming document. And to that end, task force is more nimble. If you say five people and seven people show up at the next meeting, you just strike out the five and put a seven. It's your document, it's malleable. A standing committee goes through the town meeting process and, you know, is much more structured and is intended to be much longer lasting. So, take advantage of the fact that this is your task force and it, it can be, it can be agile and meet whatever needs you come up with in the next year. But have the deliverable really clear. I have other things in here too, but I think those are the main ones, and I don't want to take up too much time.
Thanks, Herb.
Sounds like you want to help her clean it up.
Yeah.
Did it sound that way? Herb can be found throwing balls to dogs at the store at 10:00 AM every weekday morning. Eliza?
Thank you very much, Herb.
Other comments? Any other comments from the public? Thank you, Eliza, for all your work on that, and put that on the list of future agenda items, ideally for January 2nd. Okay, moving on. To discuss the proposal for coastal engineering services from GEI Consultants for South Shore Drive and take any necessary action. The proposal is in the packets. Any comments from any board members of VICA on the proposal? Carol?
Well, I guess, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear. So, the way this scope is written, we're asking them to do those full-time materials, so they will account for their time and any expenses, which probably costs less, but not to exceed an amount of $45,000. The previous contract we had was a lump sum contract, so they just get paid the amount, no matter how much time they spend. But I think this is better for us, number one, just get a sense of what it takes and how they're spending and who's doing what. And also, you know, if we do need to expand the scope, that we have a way, you know, sense of how to do that. But I think for this, if they, I think for a lot of companies, myself included, a lump sum contract is much easier because you frequently don't have to be tracked. But for example, on the Garge contract, we asked them to come over for a meeting. It really wasn't in their scope to come to this meeting in January, they agreed to do that. But I think it's a little bit cleaner for the timing anyway, to stick with a time and materials. So, that's a different, so it's a different structure than the Garge contract. And what they're really looking at is, you know, this is not really sort of engineering design. This is an alternative assessment to what could we do there? And, you know, they have the payment information and they can take that and take that. So, I think, you know, in an ideal world, it would have been great if I had it a year ago so that we could have this going on with the payment process, but that's what I, it's a wrap. So, it's really, the, the end goal is to say, you know, what are the options? What are the, you know, all part costs and where do we go?
Yeah, thanks, Herb. Other comments or questions from the board? Is there anything like a motion? Anybody? Carol?
Well, I, I wanted to make one more comment I spoke to VICA about yesterday because I think since this firm, we've engaged that they have attached their contract terms. So what I would suggest is that we approve, because we're actually approving the contract, that we approve it contingent on our attorney approving it, reviewing it and making sure there's nothing that gets them hurt. But I doubt it, but there's a, you know, and, and part of it is just making sure that as, as we experienced on the previous contract on this long year, it's sort of having a team in it for us. So if there's a non-performance issue, we can do something. And we didn't really have that in our last contract, not that we maybe would have exercised it, but even so. So I think in a way, this is the time to work out with this firm because they're also going to be working on this long year, kind of the contract term. So I don't think it's a waste of time if we lost the applicable to this long year. So I, I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign a proposal for coastal engineering services with South Shore Drive, Trilline Restoration with GEI Consultants, contingent upon a renewed approval by the town attorney and to expend up to $25,000 from the account 9195 storm damage and restoration cover of the cost.
Thanks, Herb. Is there a second? Second by Richard? Any discussion from the board? VICA, any comments?
No, I think, you know, if the board supports this, we can hopefully get something started and moving and maybe bring the residents in that area a little bit more peace to show that we're trying to do something. And hopefully, the information that they have from FEMA, knowing how much funds we're able to receive from FEMA could help them, you know, figure something out in the near future.
Any comments from the public before we vote? All right. Roll call vote, Carol? I'm sorry, yes, thank you. David?
Yes.
David's a yes, Richard?
Yes.
Richard's a yes, Bob is a yes, and Eliza?
Yes.
Eliza's a yes, yes, thank you. All right, moving on to dis, item 24, Dev 116. To discuss the request from the Chubig Island Post Office to put up street signs and take any necessary action. There was a memo from the town administrator in the packet outlining some thoughts and ideas. That being said, any comments, questions, suggestions from the board?
I appreciated what VICA wrote and her assessment of the previous sign efforts being wasted money. None of them are being turned down. The two options for solution are to either put spy cameras on every sign and/or make handpans on signs that people will be less likely to see. I like the handpans on the signs, I think that's clever. And I won't speak for the rec center, but a group like that could help put something like this together.
Oh.
Kids.
Kids, teenagers.
I was thinking, school, involve the school, involve the community and try to make it more of a community effort.
Yep.
Or have some kind of competition between, you know, the communities of street signs. I just, I think it's an opportunity maybe of spinning in a positive way. So then new members of the fire department who don't know where all the roads are would know. And whoever takes over the post office, like, you know, see if, if that maybe could deter from people wanting, if it's more about community effort and a joint effort rather than those bright fluorescent signs that were up before.
David?
Yeah, I don't know if VICA, if you've done this or not, but I went online just to look for vandal-proof street signs. Oh, and there is such a group of vandal-proof street signs.
We bought them.
Pardon?
We bought them. Posts.
It's the posts, I think.
Yeah, and you know what they did is they took a sign, they cut the whole entire thing off. So we tried them.
Okay.
So.
So much for that idea. I like your idea. I like the idea of doing some kind of a community project that actually gets people invested in the, in the solution. Like the stop sign I had on my barn.
Any other comments from the board?
I, I thought that was a creative approach that VICA suggested and I do prefer that to the surveillance state. So I, I would suggest that we pursue that approach and, you know, could even maybe ask that, you know, if the rec center wants to help or whatever. I think it's a great idea.
Richard, not to put you on the spot, but would you be willing to speak with the rec, you know people at the rec center?
I, I, no, I should see now soon.
And, and the school potentially, and, you know, maybe the board, you know.
If the board supports that, I would reach out to the school and see if it can turn in. I mean, my suggestion, my idea was school turned into some kind of a rec center project. This kind of the mindset that I was envisioning or, you know, something, something along those lines. That hopefully if kids, kids are commons and, you know, get, get the community members involved. So then whoever is taking these signs down maybe feels a little bit guiltier about doing it if they choose to do it or they don't. I mean, the sign at the, at the, you know, on, at our road, Soul Road, there is a cutout buoy. I have no idea who put it there, but it, I mean, hopefully it doesn't get taken down after this. But it hasn't, someone's touched it.
Yeah.
And it, it, yeah. Eliza has a comment.
Eliza, yes.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I like the idea of having the signage be different. I like the idea of the rec center and the school, but I would offer that maybe it's put out there that any islander may contribute their idea on how to have the signage happen. One of the things I would worry about is that kids would, you know, put effort into nice signs and that it would be painful to see any of those signs damaged. So I like the idea of putting it out there that ideas are, are being taken on how best to have signs and whether that's each street does their own sign or each road, each person can come up with ways they want to do it. I, I like that idea.
Thanks, Eliza. Well, it sounds like it's this, David?
I just wondered, how much time do we have before, you know, person's on?
She's, she's on through summer.
I, I don't know those details, but I think that, you know, if the board is in support of this, we can at least let them know that we're going to move in the right direction to make an effort. And in the meantime, I would put the focus in, you know, involving the rec center, the school, and try to see what those ideas are and how it could be expanded. Put something in the calendar, put something on the town website. And then that way, if people are interested, they can reach out, you know, maybe we can have one point of contact that's not me that they can reach out to, that can begin to formulate something that can.
Carol?
And not to rat on my story, but I do think there should be some uniformity to the sign. Because it's sort of town roadside, so they should be the same shape or size probably. And, you know, other than that, but just something so it's clearly recognizable as a.
A buoy or a fish or something consistent. Yeah, I agree.
We'll probably need to make sure that it's 911 compatible in some fashion.
Yep.
Yeah, for that kind of scale. Great, great idea, Vica, thank you very much. All right, any comments from the public? Herb?
Is the town considered Fire Road signs like they use in some towns where it's just a little fluorescent? It's only about that big fence post with a number, each road is numbered. And that's what E911 goes with, and we have those in Hartswell. Unless you want to take one of those obelisks like Julia, Julia has up in front of her house and plant it at the corner of each road, I don't, it's just going to be a challenge. That would work, probably. But if it were me, I'd put the money in there.
Are there some idea for apples?
Into better maps. And maybe people don't know how to read maps anymore, but I can find all the roads on a map by driving around pretty easily. I don't really need a sign. I mean, North Road, South Road, I mean, this is going 10 miles a road.
You're born.
Thank you for your comment. Certainly appreciate that. Even though you don't like art and, you know, little kids.
Little kids could put up the fire sign.
Okay, yeah, they could. Okay, moving on. To discuss the allocation of funds for the repair work at East Shore Drive. The town administrator has a memo, brief memo in the packet. Want to talk about that a bit? VICA?
Yeah, so East Shore Drive is, you know, one location where there was a plan to do some more or less temporary repairs, but some stabilization that was approved, not approved, but suggested and agreed upon by code enforcement officer, by FEMA and the representatives that have been in and out of here. And so we had ordered the products several, several months ago. They've been sitting at the town office. And the current public works crew is un, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting them up to that job with as new as they are. We did seek out some contractors on the island who would be interested. And there is one that gave us a quote. It would be one to two days. And if he goes over those two days, then he would, you know, the, the dollar amount is capped at however long. And we would need to order a little bit more product, which would come out of the general public works line. But it would, it would cost us no more than $5,000 to, to stabilize the area of the shore where it's closest to the road with the materials that we already have. Obviously involving the code enforcement officer through the process and making sure that we have all the appropriate permitting, which it still would fall under storm damage repair. So there's more flexibility, but taking, you know, doing our due diligence to make sure that we don't put the town in a position where we do something wrong, but really taking the proactive approach and securing that section of, of the road and the ledge. So if we do have any more storms, it doesn't, it doesn't eat away at it anymore.
One other point, the contractor, contractors that were contacted all have equipment that the town doesn't have that's more physically capable of moving rocks that large in that manner because it's going over the banks and down. So an excavator is a much better piece of equipment than a tractor, but we have.
Carol?
And what is the actual nature of the repair? I mean, what are you going to do?
So where the, where, East Shore Drive, where it's closest to the road, basically what's going to happen is there's going to be gravel and small riprap that's going to be put at an angle. And then what's the material, the tarp? It's not tarp, but.
Like a geotech?
But geotech is going to be put on top of it. And then large boulders are going to be put at the base of it to kind of hold it all together. So then that way, when water hits it, it doesn't just wash it away, but then it's also holding on a base. So very similar design to some of the work that had been suggested for, for that type of, you know, area and stabilization. And we're in a better position to be able to do that there because we do have the space and the ledge to be able to slope down instead of, you know, having it to be very dramatic, unlike South Shore Drive.
So you're basically reducing a slope, which would slow down the wave action to avoid eroding the road. It's also ledge there, right?
It's ledge at about two feet vertical above HAST. And then that ledge, which used to go horizontally a couple of feet, but now goes horizontally 14 or 16 feet.
Right.
So there's room there for that slope. The other point I would add is that the large boulders that go on top of all this are also ripraps or very sharp edged, which means they'll have a tendency to hold better than roundwood or something.
I, I don't know if anybody else attended the, you know, the, the stabilization workshop. But I mean, I would say, I mean, I think we should do this, but I'm just saying that as we move forward, trying to use more nature-based type materials would be, you know, preferable. And so that's, I'm saying why. And the state is, you know, in the process of changing the regs to try to encourage that direction. So I think in this particular instance, it makes sense. Some other types of shorefront erosion, maybe not so much.
Yeah, given that the existing, the current cut bank is within 10 inches of the road bed.
And what's the lateral extent that you have to repair above?
From the top of the slope, from the, what's called the westernmost edge or the closest to the road slope to the toe is a maximum of 14 or 15 feet.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, the other way, along the road.
Oh.
It's pretty short.
It is, it's, so the part that is being repaired is fairly short. It's where you see the most dramatic ebb out of the road.
25, 30 feet.
And it's, you know, it's, it's really, it's not a repair where we anticipate that it's kind of the permanent repair, so to speak, but it's so the road doesn't get washed out so that we can.
Yeah.
Proceed with future, you know, stabilization work or some kind of mitigation through FEMA to try to do something a little bit more permanent and.
Yeah, so there is a, is there any other commentary, Carol?
No, I mean, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to spend $5,000 from the account 9195 storm damage and restoration, the permanent costs of repair at East Shore Drive by contracted services.
Thank you, there are seconds. Second by David. Any conversation, discussion on the motion? Any comments from the public on the motion? VICA?
And I will say that this is the type of the work that when we go through the process with FEMA would, would be covered.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Carol?
Oh, yes.
Carol's a yes, David is a yes, Richard is a yes, Bob is a yes, and Eliza?
Yes.
Eliza is a yes, thank you. All right. Moving on to other business. VICA, any other business to bring up?
I have several communications, but not anything in terms of you needing to potentially have.
Yeah, good.
Motion.
Any other business from Carol?
I just wanted to let folks know that actually yesterday, we submitted a grant application to the state. This is the Community Resilience Program with Long Island for our wild card plan. We won't know until the end of March whether we get it. But it's a, it's a pretty big project to have a very qualified firm that has a lot of wild card experience actually breaking the plan and working with the community on that. So we'll let you know about that. But it was a good process working with them. And I think there are more opportunities to collaborate with them. In fact, sometimes I wonder maybe we should kind of all just be one town. Because as I worked with them, I realized it's kind of, they're, they're a different town than we are, as people know. But, I mean, they share a lot of the same challenges. And so what we were trying to explain to the contractor, like, no, we really don't want a lot of meetings because we're actually all in like 17 meetings a week, as it is. You know, and we're like, what? But I think, anyway, it was a really interesting process. I think we're doing more and more of them. So I would recommend, even on housing, that we, you know, connect with them because they're further down the track than we are on that. So anyway, I, I hope we're successful. Julia and a guy named John Maury, they're on the line, did most of the work on the project. And then the other thing I wanted, and this is kind of maybe out of order, but. but I'm gonna do it anyway, is I'd like to suggest that, and I'd like the board to quote, but I'd like to suggest that we, you know, give the town staff a holiday on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So just to extend their one-day holidays to just recognition of all the work they've done. And it's, you know, I think it would be a nice gesture and I think it would be meaningful for the council and the board. So I don't know what the process is and we actually have to do a motion, but that's kind of what I'd like to propose.
David?
I would like to make a motion to that effect that we ended the days of Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Yeah, so that would be December 24th and December 31st.
Okay. Motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Richard. Okay, discussion. From the board?
Nice idea.
Vika, are we following the process here with this being a motion? Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the public? Any comments from the public on the motion? Thank you. Thank you, Lada. Any other comments from the public? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Carol, your vote? Carol's a yes. David is a yes. Richard? Richard is a yes. Bob is a yes. Eliza?
Yes.
Eliza is a yes. So it's unanimous. Well deserved and well thought. Thank you, Carol.
So I think the board can send a report and then, you know, the staff and say with our gratitude, I think it should come from us.
Okay. I will work on that with Vika because I don't think I have all the email addresses in my computer that I need.
Email bookkeeper, he'll give you all the email addresses.
He owes me now, yeah.
And alternatively, we could, so Karen is mine.
Uh, one card though to-
For each person?
For each person.
Maybe it's not that on the rule.
I'll talk to me.
Yeah, I'll let you decide on what logistically makes most sense. But I thought the whole first word would be that. But you decide.
Thank you. Okay. All right, other business from the board?
Eliza, do you have any other business?
Sorry, say that again?
Do you have any other business?
May I bring up this survey?
Which, which, the?
Survey that?
Oh, the survey that had gone around? Go for it.
So Jeff Weska wrote up a survey to go to the community with feedback about possible changes at the transfer station and the brush dump. It has been entered into a Survey Monkey. I believe I've sent you all the link to that. So before that is released, I think the board, the select board needs to approve the release of the survey about the transfer station.
Does the board need to approve that?
I had emailed you just so you had, you knew what was in it, so.
Yeah, and I wasn't clear. That was my question, are we supposed to approve it? Or is it, I didn't even know it was already out. Not yet.
Nope, it's not yet. We're planning to release it next week. If you have feedback, then let me know. Otherwise, we're sending it out. It's just, I mean, the goal is really to get public input relative to the transfer station. So when we're going into the budget process and if there's strong feedback from the public about what they'd like to see, that could help us guide in those decision-making. But if you have, Jeff worked pretty hard on it. If you do have feedback, let me know and we can make some changes to it. Otherwise, we are gonna send it out after the holidays or after the holiday.
And that's what I was thinking, the holidays. How long will the survey be active?
Three weeks.
Couple of weeks.
At least. Yeah, into the holidays.
Well, they're not gonna send it out till after the holidays.
Yep.
Although the link that you got, I believe the link that everybody got makes it available for you to actually do the survey, which is the best way to determine if you have any suggestions as to how to approve it. And I can also say it's well designed because I accidentally tried to fill it out twice and it told me, no, you already filled it out. You can't do it twice.
And does it say who the survey is from?
Eliza, does it say who it's from? I thought it said.
Great, is it the town?
Yes.
And so I think that should be really clear that the town of Chipping Island is doing this solid.
Okay.
Yes, please do try to fill it out and give me any suggestions. Let Vika know.
The survey that I thought you were talking about is Eliza approached me and wanted to know if she could hold a kind of a public forum, public discussion at the rec center for anybody that was interested in coming, not via select board based, just a casual discussion about the survey that had gone out to see if people-
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, if people wanted to have a discussion about that or not and whether the board was okay with that happening over coffee at the rec center, right? Was that your suggestion?
Yes, that's correct. So it would be just a community conversation over coffee, similar to the format of what they do at the rec with dessert and discussion. I think that the survey to the community showed a lot of goodwill. There are still some comments that need to be changed. There's no identifying information. And then the comments, as well as the analysis of the survey can be released to the public. But I think having a conversation about it would be a move that would be appreciated by members of the community.
And I guess my question is, we had that AI summary, which I thought was pretty good. Were you also thinking of releasing the entire dataset for the survey?
Yes, and I also sent out, so I went through and looked at every single response and counted and categorized it. So the AI summary really gave a lot of general feedback. But for example, one of the questions was what is working well in the community? What needs to improve? And what are your priorities that may not be listed on the survey? So I tallied every single answer. And there were, it came to over 400 answers I tallied. But I think looking at those tallies for what's working well on the island was really favorable for our town and our nonprofits, for example. And then the number one is the sense of community spirit. So I will, I think that having people get that specific information is valuable, as well as the general AI report that looked at the text.
Carol?
I don't disagree with, you know, wanting to provide the specific information. I think the spreadsheet format, the immediacy, I would not share it in that format. I would be inclined to list the question and share the responses and not necessarily make the entire survey response clear. You know, the way it was on the spreadsheet, you could see what one person said for every single question. Frankly, I think I know some of the people that responded. And I would not want to put that out in the public for that reason because we kind of do know. And I think people should be allowed some anonymity in the whole process. So what I would do is maybe take the questions and then just list the responses, but not make the whole thing correlated so you can tell who said what or which responder said what. Does that make sense? So it's a little, it's just one step removed from kind of the spreadsheet.
Eliza, are you following what Carol's saying?
I am. Carol, if you look at the spreadsheet that I sent around, I think page two, three, and four of the spreadsheet would be, that my preference would be just to do the tallies. I know Vika has talked about whether or not we release the comments that people made. I like the idea of just doing the tallies. This number of people said this, this number of people said that. Those are, so that would be page two, three, and four of the spreadsheet I sent out.
Can I make a suggestion that you go ahead and work it out the way you have it? And then we can take a look at it before it gets released and posted?
Yep.
All right. And then is the board okay with the community discussion? Then, there we go.
I think, I don't know if we said this already, but I think Eliza volunteered Richard to help.
Yes, she did.
She did.
I did volunteer, Richard. Okay, may I? May I add one more thing? The survey for the transfer station is on Survey Monkey, so that, it's important that that's the one that people look at, not the one that's on Google Forms.
Okay.
Thank you.
Meg, can you just speak? Eliza, listen, Chip, and there's a lot of fine tuning that you could do with AI when you're analyzing these things. So if you get in that situation again, let me know and we'll go back and be more specific about it, you know, to save you some time.
Yep.
Yeah, I will go with it, but you can do more.
Chip is also offered to review all of our insurance claims before we go on. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Eliza, for your work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other, other business? All right, seeing none, moving on to communications. Vika, you said you had a few?
Yes, I do. So on Friday, we, Eliza and I are meeting with Island Institute relative to a fellow. So that's something that we are in the works. Communication relative to Sandy Point. We're gonna meet at the end of January to kind of move along as far as what could look like for parking areas down at Sandy Point. We did have, relative to Bennetts Cove, what I would call another freedom of access from one of the residents of Bennetts Cove. So there was some communication relative to that. Some FEMA communication. We now have, out of the six projects, two of them have been what they call obligated. So we know the funds, we're gonna be receiving them. And I filled out the last one-pager and we should be, you know, getting, I think that one was in the $6,200 range and one was in the $5,300 range. So we'll be receiving the first set of, the small sets of money from FEMA, which is good. So those are just some of the, some of the communications that I've had relative to some of the other things that I've been working on that have not been on the agenda or the table or. Here we go.
So when you get that money from FEMA, so say you've done the repair at Shore Drive and you get the money from FEMA and we took it out as a reserve fund, what happens?
So I reached out and asked for some guidance as to how other people do it. And because FEMA is so much more delayed and it's not within the same fiscal year, everyone does it differently. And so with this particular money that we're going to receive, most likely what's gonna happen is that money is just gonna go into revenue because the expenses and, so one of the obligations was for emergency repairs. So during the storm, when Public Works was driving around, we were able to get time and material and equipment use. And so that's what we're getting reimbursed for. That fiscal year is already gone. So that's money that I can put in to offset the expense account. So with others, I think, like the larger project relative to South Shore Drive, I'll probably set up a specific general ledger account where that, those expenses will flow through there. With something like this, with a reserve account, I do think that, yes, it will be covered. However, I can't guarantee that and I don't have anywhere else to pull that money from. So it will, it's coming out of the reserve account. If we do get reimbursed, then that will probably go into a revenue account. Unless, because I-
You understand my question?
Yes.
So we're using the coastal storm account, but we're not replenishing, but we may get reimbursed by FEMA, but it may be small amounts. We're not gonna replenish that fund with those.
So I- What's that?
It would depend on how we paid for it.
If it's an expense account, if it's a general ledger account, then yes, with the reserve accounts. Because it's through town vote, it's a little bit different and it's through a board vote. And so the recommendation that I received so far is just put it in the, put it into a revenue account. So the money is offsetting one way or another, but the numbers aren't always going to.
So I think what we should consider, I mean, as a board, it's like going into our general checking account when it comes to the budget ton. When we think of whatever we're gonna allocate to that fund, we may want capture sort of from undisputed funds, the extra $10,000, $50,000, or whatever. So, and then I think I heard you say if it's a really big expense, like several hundred thousand dollars, we may handle it differently.
Yeah, I would create a specific general ledger account. And so cash would flow in and out of the checking account, but the report would come through just one account. So South Shore Drive most likely will. And I think I'll probably, as far as tracking it, even with the most recent report, have it so that we have a better idea of what the total cost is. So.
Okay, other communications?
Nope.
So Bob, we got, I don't even remember, was the communication we got about the barge report. Was that just to you and myself?
I thought that went to everybody. Thought we sent it around to the board. We're talking about-
No, no, from Paul.
From Paul.
So we got, we got an email about concerns about the road, you know, road ownership.
That went, Paul sent that to GEI, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yep.
I thought he copied the whole board.
Okay, well, I just didn't know if the whole board knew about it. That's why I'm asking.
Nope, you forwarded to me, asked me how it should be shared. And I thought I replied under communications.
Okay.
So that's why I'm writing it?
Yeah, yeah, so.
So this would be a good time to share it.
Yeah.
Go for it. I actually do not remember the content of the memo.
So I think, can we share it with the rest of the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we should just pass it on to the rest of the board. The gist of it is Paul had some, I think, accurate reflections about the, so GEI was looking at alternative sites. He was weighing in on some of the challenges with the alternative sites. And so I think it would be worthwhile for the rest of the board to, before we have that meeting on the 7th, you'll want to read that perhaps. And I think, I think it's fairly accurate. I can't confirm that myself. And that is one thing that, I don't know if we have a go-to document for all of these paper streets kind of thing and what, I mean, because some of these things were coming out of votes at town meetings. And so I think at some point, we should maybe create an index so that, so Vika will know what the status of all these are because I don't think we're gonna all be, you know, we're gonna be dead and gone and people aren't gonna know to go back in the meetings to find out. So you'll read it, I think you'll get the idea. And then, but I would read that before the meeting on the 7th.
To be clear, the memo you're talking about is the one in which the code officer's emailing the town administrator with a copy to run.
No, no. So Paul Valeska emailed GEI.
Yes, yes, yes.
And it was a pretty lengthy email with a lot of detail about paper streets.
Yep.
And what occurred to me when I read it is that we need a better way to track that information. I mean, I think we did convey that information to GEI generally, not as specifically as Paul had in his mail, but it was a new information for them. but it was a new information for them. But it did make me realize that, you know, it's institutional memory that we know how this works and we need to kind of, you know, make it more accessible for people. So anyway, the, the other members of the board should see that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, other communications? All right, moving on to the minutes from December.
Eliza? So Eliza?
Yep.
Uh, can you share the communication that you shared with me about your conversation with JP Cog, please?
Right, thank you. Um, when we did our, when I met Christine Egan at JP Cog at our, uh, one day retreat, she talked about how they use AI to take minutes of meetings. So I reached out, um, to see what that, what was involved there. And there's an employee who is willing to show all of our nonprofits or anyone interested at the town or beyond how to use AI to take minutes of meetings. And this would be a one-hour presentation on Zoom. There's, uh, the town manager of North Yarmouth would like to do it as well. So, um, I think this would be a good resource for our nonprofits. Um, anyway, so I just wanted to pass that on, that, uh, if this is a good resource, that we could offer the community.
Sounds great.
I think the library has, Vika's been working on that. I don't know if she's actually gotten to use it, but it's, yeah.
We can, we can advertise it on our website and send out to the nonprofits that we, you know, know of and then set that up and
Yep.
have it be available.
I would suggest it be, uh, there, it could, each person participating could do it individually on Zoom. It could also be done as a large group in the community room at the rec center on the big TV screen. So there are several different options and I'm really well aware that nonprofits on the island would appreciate this resource.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Other communications? All right, moving on to the minutes from December four. Met a motion to approve the minutes from December fourth. Okay, David? Second by David, motion by Richard. Um, Carol, your vote?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bob is a yes. Eliza?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous. The only item I wrote down tonight to be placed on a future agenda is the revised draft of the housing task force. Uh, hopefully on January second. Uh, for Eliza, you're able to put something together in advance of that. Uh, what's our deadline for that agenda for January second, Vika? If you guys are.
It's, uh, it's gonna be a tight, tight agenda timeframe.
Right.
Um, it is, so for January second, um, we are going to have to have that, uh, posted probably Friday the 27th.
Right.
So, um.
So they wanna finalize the packet on the 26th, Eliza? So if you're able to get that put together by the 26th and get it drafted over to Vika, then we can, uh, decide whether to put it on the agenda for the second, but it looks like a good thing to do.
Yep. Okay.
And then we have other agenda items on the spreadsheet that can be carried up. Um, the other one that's been hanging fire for a while, we've talked about, is a review of all the grants.
Right. And we post on that. I don't think we want to do it on the seventh, given the things. Post, if we need to see this other contract. Um, so maybe in January. It's not urgent. I just, I think we do, there are some that are kind of gonna get melded together and I wanna make sure the board's on board with that. And then the other thing I'd like to do, not for the second, but maybe sooner rather than later, is I'm happy to put together a proposal, again, to sort of, you know, deal with some parking issues down at the Stone Pier and try and, and so it would be first to, you know, submit it and have it as part of the packet and we could talk about it. And then we could maybe, you know, decide on it and all the meeting or whatever. But I think it's time to start, we talked about it. We did the short-term thing, you know, around, at the end of the summer. But I'd like to make some additional changes, which I'll put in the writing and then we can talk about.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, any other items, Vika or Chris, that you had down for?
No.
Okay. All right, um, with that being the case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-six. So, motion by David, second by Richard, all in favor. Eliza?
In favor.
Bob's in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
In favor.
Unanimous. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you.